Here comes the pile. There's a lot of them. Stop, get out. Do I? Stop. I get one too?
North Smithfield Town Council, May 16th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you lead us with the prayer and the pledge, please?
Lord, assist the heavenly spirit of council, all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibilities. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, created in the first place for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Open forum pursuant to a right on general law, 42-46-6. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be heard during open forum at this time? Last call. Okay, we'll move on. I'm going to be moving the agenda around a little bit. We have a trying to bring some people that are here at that are present tonight to move them up to the top. However, I do want to go over just a couple of housekeeping things. We're going to move on to the discussion by council of other action on payment of bills. If anybody has any, if you take a look at the bills, if anybody has anything that they would like discussed or pulled from here at this time, the discussion. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vadeney.
I make a motion that we approve the approval list for invoices dated May 16th, 2021, in the amount of general fund, $306,358.78. Sewer and water, $1,949.53, for a total of $308,308.31. With department stipends to the library of $38,410.75. School department, $1,758,459.92. Fire department, $263,395.33. Inter-local trust, $150,189.56. Retirement account, $5,014.76. USDA loan, final payment, $2,710.7. US Bank for general obligation notes of $282,187.50. Total electronic payments of $2,500,367.89, for a total payment of $2,808,676.20.
Thank you. That's a motion. Do we have a second? Mrs. Zelensky?
There's a typo on the date. It's 5/16/22, not 21. Because it probably would have been a lot less money last year.
It didn't look right when I read it, but it...
Okay, Cynthia, we can make that change easy enough, right? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Discussion by council of all other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council saw request. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, I am going to pull, if you can go to your packets, I'm going to pull the North Smithfield Police Department monthly report. And I'm going to pull the North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Monthly Report.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vadeney.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as follows. Town Council minutes of April 18th and May 2nd, 2022. Animal Control Monthly Report for April of 2022. North Smithfield Municipal Court Monthly Report for April of 2022. And North Smithfield General Fund Profit and Loss Report for 3/31/2022.
It's a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, the reason I pulled these is I kind of, I knew we'd have an usually a large amount of people in the audience tonight. So I wanted to bring attention. We'll start with the police department. Just want to bring some attention to what your officers are out there doing. In the month of April, the police department had 1,434 calls to service. They stopped 299 motor vehicles and they made 53 arrests. I worked at a busy, very busy state police barracks back in the day, and trust me, these numbers are very impressive. These guys are out really out there hustling and working hard. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the next one I did, I pulled was the North Smithfield Fire and Rescue, and it's the same thing, same situation. EMS responded to 190 calls. That alone is, it's kind of overwhelming when you think about it. They had the fire, the respondent for 38 calls. Others, 82. That could be a number of different things. And mutual aid, they provided mutual aid 18 times. So once again, I just want to bring attention to everybody about the hard work that the fire department is out there doing every day. And they're short-staffed right now, too, and they're still getting it done. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the North Smithfield Police Department interdepartmental communication and North Smithfield Fire and Service. Okay, so Mr. Vadeney made the motion and Ms. Howes second. As long with Ms. O'Hara, okay? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, now for the fun part. We're going to go to, we're going to move to new business A. Discussion by council of all other action on presentation with citations for the 150th Anniversary Parade Committee. I had the honor of being on this parade committee, and I got to tell you what an impressive job they did. What a, I mean, these guys really pulled it together. What a great job. So that's why we agreed that we'd like to recognize your efforts and issue a citation from the council and from the administrator tonight. So what I'll do is I'll call them. I'll call you out and just come up here and receive your citation, please. Carol Gagnon. Carol? She's not here. Mary Beth Sosa. Chief Lafferty, but he's not here. Richard Keen. Richard is the man behind the curtain. Look at this. Administrator Zelensky. Right pen the gas. I don't see Peter Brancioni here, right? Lynn Richer? Lisa Gagnon. Lisa represented the town when One Socket, went to One Socket City Council, and they gave us a citation for, and appreciate that. They gave us a citation for the 150th. They recognized the town officially, so good job. Linda Flies isn't here. I don't see Linda. She's from One Socket. She represented, One Socket brought a whole division to the parade. Kate Pascarello. Kada Shadi is not here. Carter Shadi is not here. Ellen Lamro. Chief Dave Shadia. I see Ann Lily, is he here? No. Dave Richards. Only people who get the memo. Conchetta White. I know Christian DiRizendis is here. April Lombardi. Sharon Malandola. Ryan Van Howe. Brian Silva. That's it?
Is not. Town of North Smithfield, State of Rhode Island, official citation. Being known to all that, on behalf of the people, the Town of North Smithfield, the Town Council, Town Administrator, hereby presents to John Boragad for your outstanding contribution as a member of the North Smithfield Parade Committee for the North Smithfield one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration parade.
Thank you, and thanks to the parade committee again. Now, we're also going to move up new business B. If you want, I'll take two minutes. If the parade committee, if you don't want to hang around, I'll give you two minutes to clear the room. So you don't think you're interrupting, if you want to. You're more than welcome to stay, but I'm just giving you the option, giving you the chance. So I'm going to take two minutes.
Somebody can sit here. We want to talk behind your back.
They were all wondering how they're going to bug out without causing any. Okay, we're going to move new business B towards the top, to the top of the agenda at this time. Discussion by council, discussion by council vote of the action on request by State of Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency to construct emergency communications tower at existing Maury Fire Tower on One Socket Hill Road. Mark Pappas, Thomas Guthline, and Christopher McGrath. Gentlemen, would you like to, when would you like to come up and? Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you very much. And all the council members, I appreciate the quick turnaround. We sent a letter in about two weeks ago asking you to be seen today to talk about this eight hundred megahertz tower that we'd like to build at the Fire Tower site on Maury. It's a dilapidated site, which we know is in disrepair. And part of our mission at the Rhode Island EMA by statute is to oversee the eight hundred megahertz first responder communications throughout the entire state. What a great segue, Mr. President. Thank you for your police, fire, and EMS services, because all of those calls were done on the eight hundred megahertz system. All those two thousand calls. So having said that, we have a presentation today to discuss and kind of make it easier to understand, because land mobile radio communications can be a little difficult to understand. So today, I have from EMA Mr. Guthline, who's the acting director, while I'm over at the governor's office taking care of COVID, I'm not that busy now, so. Chris McGrath is here, who's the ops chief, and oversees eight hundred megahertz system with my team at REMA. But some folks came down today in support, Dean Hoxey's the chief of Rhode Island DEM Enforcement. We have Dave Smith, who's the director of E nine-one-one. Those two guys were pioneers in building the system back in the day. We have Chief Scott Cattell, who's the president of the Fire Chiefs Association, North Kingston Fire. Chief Chatra is here from One Socket in support, and we appreciate that, sir, all of you. Thank you very much for coming and support. I'm going to turn it over to Chris, because you don't want to hear from me, get right to it, and he's going to walk you through what our respectful request is. So thank you very much again.
And Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for listening to our presentation tonight. CJ, if I can have a side, please. So as the director said, under Rhode Island general law, we are tasked with running, maintaining, and everything that goes along with this system. So the system, it's quite large, we have twenty-four tower sites located across the state, from here down to Westerly to Tiverton, all over. That's in addition to five sites that the city of Providence maintains that links into our system, but we don't necessarily maintain those, but they work in collaboration with us. All our sites require to be connected to each other, either via a point-to-point microwave link or a fiber backhaul link. So you can imagine some places like One Socket Hill Road, we don't have fiber available, so we have to use a point-to-point microwave link. I might refer to that as microwave in the future, but just don't think of your consumer microwave, this is a, it's a point-to-point link, they have to see each other, one-to-one, in order for those links to work. Without our system having those links together, all of our sites being linked together, we are not able to provide the border-to-border coverage that we do currently. Side, please. So the RISCON system is divided up into four zones. Here in North Smithfield, we're in the northern zone of the system. We also have a southern zone, Metro Providence Zone, and we just built a couple of years ago during COVID, an East Bay Zone. So four zones make up the system. Each, each of those different zones requires multiple sites, multiple towers, in order to provide coverage. We can't just have one tower in an area, we need to have multiple towers to provide coverage over a greater amount of space. This northern zone is our most busy part of the system, we have some very large departments that are on it. One Socket Police and Fire are both on it, One Socket Police is actually our most active and busiest user on the system. When you look at the number of times somebody keys up a radio and the amount of airtime that they have. We also have some other busy departments, North Providence, East Providence, Cranston, all of those ride on this northern zone of the system and depend on that coverage that we provide in this area. Side, please. So North Smithfield, our current site is located on the historical Maury Fire Tower. I'm sure it was a good location originally when they came up with it, it's an existing tower, they were able to put the equipment on it. We have the equipment there, we have a point-to-point link which shoots back to Chottamis Hill, which is where the center of our system is based, everything needs to get back to Chottamis in order to work. And then our Cumberland site actually connects off of North Smithfield. So our North Smithfield site is actually the hub for the Cumberland site, as well as some assets that are in One Socket. One Socket's dispatch center actually connects through North Smithfield Maury Fire Tower. The tower currently sits just above the tree line, about sixty feet or so. Every year, the trees grow higher, and we're trying to do as much as we can to, you know, abate that issue. But we've been experiencing tree growth that's been impinging on our microwave point-to-point links. Currently, the link that's there, that links back to Chottamis, is what we call marginal. And on a bad, heavy rainstorm day, that links throws some errors. Snowstorms is problematic for it, and it's really what we call end of life. It cannot be upgraded, we cannot do anything else to maintain it, it is what it is, it needs to be replaced and upgraded. Because of the way that the Fire Tower is, we cannot upgrade it, we can't put new equipment on there. We have done a structural inspection on it, and as you can imagine, it did not pass. We're lucky that it stands up today as it is, with the, all the equipment and antennas that are on there, we cannot put anything else new on there. Side, please. So what we plan to do, what we first came up with, is we just recently built a new tower down in Charlestown, and Charlestown actually gave us their old tower and said, hey, you guys can use this as part of the RISCON system. You built a new tower down here, the old tower is yours to use as you see fit. So we had it removed, and we have it in storage, but our plan was to be able to reuse that tower, to not incur any costs to us, to rebuild it. The number one place that we need a new tower and we need to rebuild is here in North Smithfield. So our proposal and our plan was to reuse that existing tower, build it next to the current Fire Tower, which allows us to reuse the emergency generator that's already on site, the shelter building that's already on site, all that equipment can stay in place, and if we build the new tower right immediately next to it, it's a much more simple for us to run the cables from that existing building up onto the new tower and allow us to have a new, you know, much better site than we have currently. When I say one hundred and sixty foot, by the way, that's the current height, maximum height of the tower that we removed from Charlestown. It is not to say that we have to use all one hundred and sixty feet of it here for this project. It's going to be based on what our point-to-point links show, what our coverage looks like when we run it, there's a lot of engineering that goes into actually building a tower. But the reason I keep saying one hundred and sixty is because the tower that we removed from Charlestown totals one hundred and sixty feet. They come in twenty-foot sections, so it could be that we only need one hundred and forty feet of it or one hundred and twenty feet of it. I don't know that for sure yet, we have to do the engineering and a lot of work in order to figure out exactly what that right spot is for where we need to go.
When you say it's a lattice tower, similar to what's out here?
Similar to what's out there, yeah, but just with a larger base, yep, so it's, you know, three main sections that go up and it has crisscross to go up, yes.
Like the Eiffel Tower.
Yes, exactly, yes, yep. So this up here is the microwave constellation. As you can see, North Smithfield sits right in the center of Burrville and Cumberland. So our phase-two project that we're working on, we got some state capital funding, we're working on what we're calling phase-two. It's all about making our backhaul in the northern zone more resilient and making a loop out of it. The best way to have resiliency is to have two pass out. So if a microwave link goes down, we have another microwave link which can pick up for it. It's happened, snowstorms sometimes take those out, or, you know, other disasters, we're emergency management, we want to make sure that, you know, the system that we build, that your first responders and every first responder state uses, we want it to be a hundred percent every time. So this microwave constellation that you see here with all these links, this northern zone, this is what we're trying to achieve right now. Without North Smithfield, it's kind of the linchpin of it right there, we're sort of dead in the water as far as building the rest of that microwave constellation. Because so much of what we're building depends on that, without that being in the middle, we're forced to sort of reroute, come up with other ways that we can link those sites together on multiple paths. Right now, I don't have a good answer on how we would do that, but if, you know, we had to find some other way, we might, or we would just have one link. And unfortunately, if that link went down, we would lose that site in the area. Not preferable, but that could happen. Side, please. I apologize, it's not supposed to be a blank slide. Okay, so as you can see here, these are two examples of coverage from the system. The one to the left is the coverage that is provided from the Cumberland site, and the slide to the right is the coverage that's provided by the North Smithfield site. I highlight those two again because they are dependent on each other right now. If we lose North Smithfield's backhaul link, we also lose Cumberland. Can I have a slide, please? This is what our northern zone of the system on portable radios looks like without North Smithfield and Cumberland. Anything that's in blue is coverage, meaning a first responder in the area with a portable radio is able to talk reliably back to their dispatch. Anything that you see that's in green is an area where they do not have coverage. As you can see, by taking those two sites out, it leaves us a massive hole in the northern corner of Rhode Island. Next slide, please. This is what it looks like today as we stand right now. It's much more filled in and a pretty, one of our most well-covered areas of the state with those two sites. Can I go, just go back one? So again, just without those two sites there, it goes to a pretty nothing area. You can go ahead. This is just with Cumberland, so if we were to lose the North Smithfield site or take that out, or have to just use Cumberland or find a link for that alone, you can see, it does fill in the Cumberland area, but for North Smithfield, Greater One Socket, that area, again, we're in a no-coverage zone. So you can see how critical a component to our system this is. Without having those two sites and specifically not having North Smithfield, we lose a lot. And again, that means first responders on the street, their radios are not going to work. It's not a, it might work or it doesn't work, this is a absolutely does not work. With digital systems and eight hundred radios, you either have coverage or you don't. It's kind of like, you know, cell phones, we went from analog to digital, you know, you drop a call, you drop a call, same thing happens with our system. Anybody that's in those areas there, they're not getting out, they're not talking back to their dispatch whatsoever. Side, please. So if we don't have Maury Tower, if we can't build anything up there, you know, what else? We did do some research, we tried to find what are other, other alternatives, is there a better place to go, is there something better that we can do? We took a look at the Air Guard Base, that is in town. It is not viable for a couple of reasons. Number one, there's some land property issues that would take a long time for us to work through, and we really just don't have that amount of time. Number two, you'll probably have some coverage maps in there, which I'm not going to show in the presentation, but you can take a look at them. There is a loss. So One Socket Hill Road is a very high place. I've heard some debates over if it's the second highest place in Rhode Island or not, I'll leave that alone. But it is very high, so no matter what we do, if we don't go on top of the mountain, we got to go around the mountain. So if we go on the backside of it, One Socket loses out. If we go on the One Socket side, North Smithfield loses out. So we're in that kind of precarious place of if we don't have something on Maury Tower, we really got to pick and choose where we go, because somebody's going to lose out. There are no other alternatives at this point. Anything else, it would be a much lower area, and low does not really work for radio signals. You know, again, we have to get over those peaks and mountains in order for us to provide that coverage that we need to provide reliably. So you can skip through these, again, these are for you to take a look at if you want. That's the purple and the red is the different colors, red basically is, is what we lose by moving. There was some discussion that we've had in the past about lattice tower versus monopoles and different things. So number one, the reasons that we proposed the lattice tower is because we have an existing tower. So our phase-two project is focused all on the backhaul. We didn't have money in the project, and we don't have money in the project, to build a new tower. So by reusing this tower that we have existing, that isn't, doesn't have a purpose right now, it's not going to cost the state or the town or anybody any money to construct a reliable structure at this location. If we were to pivot and go to a monopole tower, we'd have to find the money and the budget for that, and it's a much more difficult build. As you can imagine, the terrain up there is, you know, you wouldn't want to be building a house, very rocky. To put a monopole tower up there, it's going to be much more difficult for us to do that. A monopole tower is also difficult for us with our system, because they tend to sway a lot. A lattice tower is very rigid because of the way it's constructed. A monopole tower, as you can imagine, is just one stick, it moves a lot. So when you put microwaves that have point-to-point on there and they move, you tend to lose connection with those a lot. So we'd have to make a very structurally rigid tower up on that location in order to make it work with our system. It can be done, but it's going to be a much different, much bigger, much more expensive project in whole to build a monopole tower up there. Alternative number two, relocating the Air Guard facility, like I said, right now, that's just not a viable option. It could take us years just to get through the permitting process that we need to acquire the land and other things there. And again, we just don't have that amount of time right now, we need to make sure that first responder communications are priority here in this area. Side, please. That's everything for the presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions from anybody.
I got a, does anybody have any? I just got a couple of quick ones. If Maury Tower was structurally sound, and there was no issues with it, would you be wanting to put up a lattice tower, or would you be happy with the, with Maury Tower the way it is, if it was structurally sound and in great shape?
Currently, it's not high enough for us, so we would need another twenty or thirty feet on top of where Maury Tower is right now in order for us to make those links. Because we need to shoot from that location out to Cumberland and out to Burrville. So right now, the current height that it's at with the tree growth, it would not meet our requirements, no.
Okay.
Council go first, please.
So how tall, so you're saying the Maury Tower is only about a hundred and twenty feet?
No, currently, it's sixty feet, I believe, and the trees are right, pretty much even with, with the top of that.
So would it go right behind it, or would it be on the side of it?
It would be right on the side of it, if you took the, the piece of property sort of has two squares, if you will, we'd be a square immediately to the right of the one that currently contains the shelter and the generator.
Okay, I know where you're going, if you want to take it from there.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, are you Mr. Guth, Guthline?
No, Mr. McGrath, Chris McGrath.
Hi, welcome. Well, since we had our meeting in the State House to discuss this, a couple of things that. have gone on. As you know, we received a substantial grant from Senator Reed to repair the tower, the Maori historic fire tower will be brought up to complete structural integrity. Now, question is, have you performed a tree line survey of the height of the trees?
We have not performed a tree line survey currently from the location up there, and for two reasons. Number one, we're building a new Burrville tower, so in order for us to do that, the new tower has to be up and unaligned, so it wasn't the time for us to be able to do that now. We have had preliminary work done with our vendors that do that work, and they haven't given us some indications of, yes, you need to be higher than the tree line in order for your microwave to connect.
Do you, the proposed tower in Burrville, what is the height of that?
The Burrville Tower is 175 feet.
Fair. Well, what's happening this week? We've already gone out to an engineering company to look at Maori Tower. We've got a preliminary plan. They're coming in this week to actually go back up into the tower itself to look at some of its structural integrity of inside panels. They're also going to come out with a drone to do a tree line survey. So I'm going to pose the question I posed at the State House is, how difficult would it be to clear a path with the trees where you're concerned about? Because if you're on Route 146, you do not see the trees encroaching on the tower. I'm not an arborist, I don't know how fast trees grow, but we're going to do that survey. I can tell you right now that the Maori Tower, the fire tower, is near and dear to this town. It's a historic site. And to take and put up a mono, excuse me, not a monopole, a lattice tower, which our zoning ordinance forbids lattice towers in town, and to be at that height, you'll see that tower from Worcester, you'll see that tower from the Blue Hills in Boston. So I think what we have is something that's very invasive that's being proposed to be put up there. I can tell you that I, from the administrative point, but it's going to be a town council decision, think the town would be more than willing because we're, we are involved in public safety. If you can put a point-to-point microwave tower to hit Cumberland, to chop Miss Hill, maybe shoot somewhere else, you have to clear the trees down, that tower's going to be rock solid. Now, we're going to also be removing some of the antiquated or, um, rail towers we no longer need, which will loose, remove some of the load bearing of ice, wind, and everything. That tower's going to be just like it was built back in the 1950s. So as the administrator, I can't speak for the council, but if you could top off some trees, if it's necessary, we'll know by doing this drone survey by the end of the week what's going on out there. And I would hope that the state would conjoin us in looking at this rather than putting up a huge lattice tower, which by the way, I'm sure is going to have to meet FAA requirements of blinking lights. So it, to the town of North Smithfield, it's going to be very intrusive. So I wanted to share that with you. I think that's it. I, you know, I made a few points.
I'll answer any question. Director Pappas?
So thank you. And would you be willing to partake in that drone flyover on the trees? I get, it's invasive, I get that. And we've encountered that with a number of different communities, and we've always, always struck a balance, and the community has come through. So we're willing to work with the community to make it happen, one way or the other. I'm not, here's the deal, you're holding all the cards, right? The card game is totally yours to win. It's your geography and topography that we need, and I've got nothing in return except to say that we pay for all of your communication system. We don't charge any city or town. We make zero money off the 800 megahertz system, zero. But yet, I employ five people that would come out in a moment to work on any problem you have in North Smithfield for your 800 megahertz system. I pay for all the maintenance of your equipment that's on our tower, all of it. You pay nothing, right? So it's really a win-win, if you think about it. The only thing we ask is that communities pay for our handhelds and portables, but we maintain the entire system for the entire state, and this is a key, critical spot for us, and for you, and for the surrounding community, for first responders' communications. That's all it is. Not selling AT&amp;T, Verizon, none of that. I'm just here to tell you, it's all about first responder communications, and any one of these chiefs that are here, or directors, will tell you, that's what we do and that's what we continue to do. But we would be happy to come out.
Be happy to share the report with you, Director. Looking forward to working to any of your staff that wish to come out. We've had this conversation, you know where I stand on it, but it's going to be the direction of the town council.
Sure.
And I think that we can come to an agreement here if you exclude the lattice tower. Yes, you pay for our communications like you do every other community in the state. We're very appreciative. We're very appreciative of the help, the technical expertise, but I do want to see that the line-of-trees survey that's going to be done, and if we have to take, we're not talking, because it is line-of-sight, and because the tower itself is very similar to a lattice tower. For the folks, I know, you know where the lattice tower is, an idea of what that would look like, a shorter one, would be the one on the state police barracks on 146. That's a lattice tower. Now, I don't believe they're going to have all the arrays that the state police have out there. I don't know. You haven't presented the plan yet, but I firmly believe that with the advancement in microwave dishes now, line-of-sight, whether it goes to Cumberland or Chop Miss Hill, I think we can facilitate this, will provide better communications than we currently have.
Yeah, the current plan for the tower, unless I'm wrong, is two microwave dishes, ours and your equipment, on that, on that tower. So, and like Chris McGrath said, do we need all 160-plus? Probably not, but we do need more height.
We also got to check the wind load and...
Wind load, ice, yep.
And the other things, and again, the microwave link from one to the other is what the key component of this is. Whether your tower is at a certain height, we need to be 30 feet above that in order to link, that's what we need to be. I don't know, because we, after our last conversation, we stopped the engineer because we didn't want, we met with the council, we didn't want to end up basically throwing money away if it wasn't going to be allowed. So we stopped our engineer. So we, the questions you're asking is in our engineering, but we can't, we're not going to move ahead unless we know that we have some kind of, and to say that we have to throw out the last part of it, I can't answer that yet because I don't know where your tower's going to be, I don't know what the wind load is, and I don't know what the microwave connection's going to be. There's a lot of different variables, but we're only going to build as high as we need it. We're not, but like Chris said, if we're giving you the full length of the tower, because I don't know what that height is, because we haven't done the engineering, but again, our whole mission is about public safety. It's about providing safe communications to fire and police so they can do their job every day. Because next to a police officer, the next most important thing, other than his weapon, is probably his radio, because he's by himself. Firefighter, the same thing, they're in a fire, something happens, that little red button on the radio is the most important thing to that firefighter. And that sends an alert to all the other firefighters and police officers that something's wrong. That, and again, it's up to you. In my opinion, that's what we strive for, and that's what we've been striving for. And a good example of it, we just had a police chase from Massachusetts to Connecticut, all on the 800 system, because the way that we had designed it, it worked without flaw. That's, that's what we're trying to keep in place. So again, that's, that's, I mean, that's just my...
Yeah. So I'd hate to come back here in a couple of years, and the tree growth is back, and, you know, we've wasted time and money and effort, and we're back in the same space. So I don't know what the new tower's going to look like, if there's any chance it could be built higher than what it currently is. I don't know if that's in there or not, but...
I'm sorry, Director, we're not, we did not propose to elevate or make the tower the current historical fire tower higher.
Okay.
But this leads me into a question. I asked what the height, the proposed height was for Burrville, because I'm, again, I'm not a microwave specialist. I boil water in one, that's all I know. But if you currently have a connection that reaches Cumberland, and it's threatened by the trees, then I would advocate that we cut back a swath of trees. That's doable. That's not a problem. And to come back in a couple of years, I think depending, be a heck of a lot longer than a couple of years. So following up on the Burrville situation, microwaves are amiable. If you want, want to go higher in Burrville, shoot it up to Burrville, they can shoot it to Johnson wherever they want, but if you're currently receiving a microwave beam from Cumberland, and the concern is about trees, then we cut some trees down, because it gets bigger than what we're discussing right now. We have easements of access to get there. We have people that, homes that have bought it. And it's going to be, I can tell you, I was around when they first promoted putting up cell towers up there, it was very contentious in this town. People said they did not want to spoil the panoramic view of Maori Tower. So again, I would just suggest I'll certainly work with your experts, myself, the town planner, we have engineers that are coming on board. Hopefully, we can facilitate this without erecting a lattice tower in that historic spot.
From what you're, what you're trying to achieve with the lattice tower, could that also be achieved with modifications to the Maori Tower?
I don't, I can't, to be honest with you, we can't answer that right now because we don't know what the microwave line-of-sight is, and just so you know, the trees may not be in the Maori Tower area, they could be 10 miles away. The tree in like, in the Burrville site you're talking about is in a hole, so that's why it's a higher tower. So there's a lot of different variables to the towers, so to be honest, or to answer your question, I can't. I'd be, I'd be lying to you if I did.
Ms. Vannity, do you have something you wanted to ask?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of points. We faced the issue here, that's why that tower was out there. We needed it for communication for EMA, and we had to add 20 feet to it, for the exact reason that he's talking about. It's not so much the connection that we have going from here to the police station, it's getting out other places. We had to add 20 feet to what we originally put out here. It was going to be 60 feet, we put 80 feet out there. So that's an 80-foot tower, to give you an idea. And it, and it's not, to me, it's not something that's unsightly. You see it, and it disappears over time when you see it there on a regular basis. And to the administrator's concern that we can't put it up there because it's not allowed in our zoning, we own that property. We own the property that the Maori Fire Tower is on. The town of North Smithfield owns that property, and our ordinance allows it to be put on town property if we, if we so choose. I'm not telling you to go ahead and put 160-foot tower up there, I'm saying we need to look at this thing. I understand their concerns, because we had to deal with it with this building. And so the tower is there, and we can refurbish it, and it's still going to serve as a fire tower, and it's historic and everything, but the reality is, we need to update our communications for fire safety, police safety and whatnot. And if it needs to be 130 feet or 140 feet, then that's what we need to look at. And this is not going to be something that's, you know, you might see it, no different than the radio towers that you see, you know, in the, in the wind turbines and stuff. After a while, they're just there, and you see them, and they're not, they're not unsightly, they're just part of the horizon. And so you may see it, but it's not going to take away from the beauty of the town. It's going to, it's going to make things better for the people in the town, and it's something I think that we need to look at, that if they're saying that we need to put this tower, and it needs to be higher than that fire tower, that's what we need to really look at. We need to let them do their engineering. It's not my field of expertise. We relied on them to give us expertise on this one. They said, you might want to go 20 more feet so that you're going to be covered long-term. You're not going to run into a problem saying, oh no, now we got to add more to it. Once it's up, it's up. And so this is, this is what we need to look at. And so, you know, I, I understand their position on this thing. I can't tell you all the engineering to it and everything, but I just understand why they're saying that it needs to be at this height for the line-of-sight. It's not necessarily to clear the trees at Maori Tower, it's to clear the trees in Burrville, it's to clear the trees in Smithfield, it's to clear the trees in a bunch of different places. The ground is like this, if you notice their maps that they show, they got green spots here and there, those are dead areas, just like when you're on your cell phone and we have dead areas in the town. They don't want dead areas. That's what it really comes down to, and that's what we need to look at. And so I rely on their expertise to tell us, it needs to be at this height to run the system, the system need to run properly, needs to be at this height. This lattice tower isn't going to be that unsightly. It's not going to be six feet wide, 10 feet wide going all the way up, it's not going to look like the Eiffel Tower.
I beg to differ. Consul, I beg to differ. What we have out here, scale-wise, is no comparison to 180-foot lattice tower that's being proposed. The base will be wider, this is for radio, there's no microwave on it, they went an extra, they went extra 30 feet on it for potential use. We've already heard the microwave, they're not sure, I'm not being condescending, please, they're not sure if there is an existing or will be a problem between here and Cumberland. I'm saying that they're getting a microwave from Cumberland, I haven't heard them say they're not. Promoting that we take some trees down on our side, Burrville uses their tower, they can shoot up, and Burrville can shoot wherever it is. They also have the option of using, I guess, digital cable to make connections somewhere, it's just not microwave, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Mr. Vannity, can you say your question?
Do you also use, besides microwave point-to-point, how else do you get the communication? Do you cable?
Fiber optics.
Fiber.
Yes, if fiber is available in the area...
Yes, but it's, but it's not here, I understand that, I understand.
But we also, we also use that as a redundancy. So our priority is to have microwave, because when a hurricane comes through, when it takes out all the fiber that connects it, the sites go bad, right? So we like to use it as a redundant backup with a microwave as a primary, and if we can get both, we prefer to have both.
That makes sense. But I just want to come full circle, well, back to what I said. Happy to work with you to discuss putting up microwaves on the new improved Maori Tower. What I haven't heard, I think, Director, you might have alluded to it, you were talking about engineering, were we considering raising that tower? I, no one's mentioned that, it's a good point. If you want to, you want to join us in funding it, because I'm thinking, how are you going to get that? I know lattice comes in sections, you got to go over easements, the pathway there, probably you would have to build a new, by two minutes, or some type of crush dome to get up there. It's going to be very costly, so if there's something you and your directors wished to speak with us and our engineers, I'd be happy to explore that, but like everything else, it's going to cost money.
Yep. No, thank you very much, I understand that, and again, we're willing to do whatever. We've worked with a number of communities, including Charleston, recently Foster, to put up towers, and, you know, we've bent over backwards with the communities, and I get it, like I said at the beginning, I understand it. But at the end of the day, I was a police officer in Pawtucket for 23 years, retired and came to EMA. I really only care about one thing, the safety of your citizens and the safety and security of the first responders. That's it. There's nothing else in it for me. So that's why I came here today. Thank you for your time. I envision this will be more talks going on from here, but thank you so much for your time. And we're all here to answer any more questions you have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Now, personally, I don't disagree with what Mr. Vannity's saying, but I just need more information to see, to find out if, if it is possible to achieve the same thing with, after we do the study at the Maori Tower. And if it is possible, then that's the ideal situation. But I just need more, I'm not ready to make a vote on, personally, I'm not ready to vote on that yet, that I'd like to just kind of get some more information.
We're definitely not there ready to vote on it. My, my point is, yeah, so if we know what the size of the tower might look like, and I get their pictures, they're saying, do you want to hear more? And I do. That's basically what you guys are asking, do you want to hear more? And I do.
If I may pose another question. Director, if you'd be kind enough to give us a location of a tower, a lattice tower, how many antenna array, how many antennas are on that lattice tower? So we could, I'll take a, I'll take a road trip to take a look at it, get an idea about it, to see. So we could, I'll take a, I'll take a road trip to take a look at it, get an idea about it to see.
That lattice tower is a 20-foot section stored at a DPM storage garage in Cameron.
Oh, yeah, okay. But I would like to see one that's up. Do you have one that is up and operational? Provided, yeah. If you can give us the specs on this tower that you have in storage and one that I can go look at with, uh, an engineer? Yeah, we, we can't do that. It's prohibited for commercial use up there. So we can't put on, uh, G5 or anything else that may be coming in the future. It's just prohibited by, by the, by the deeds.
Uh, we're not ready to vote on this, however, we would, uh, I will entertain a motion to put the, uh, this information into the record at this time. So it's going to be the RIS CON North Smithfield Site Needs, uh, handout that we will enter into the record. That's a motion. We have a second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for watching.
Thanks. How long have you been retired?
Two seven.
All right.
I think we ran into each other.
Yeah. I recognize you. Okay, moving on now, we're going to go to, uh, new business.
Board of License Commissioners.
Yeah, that's where I'm at, right. I'm sorry, old business. Uh, North Smithfield Town Council sitting as a Board of License Commissioners. Discussion by Council on the Action on Request for Fireworks License for Keystone Novelties Distribu-, Distributors LLC, DBA Keystone Fireworks located at 900 Victory Highway. That is Slayzal Plaza for your information.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vadeney.
I make a motion that we approve the license application of Alex Mutsbach's Keystone Novelties for a license for fireworks at 900 Victory Highway. They've been there for a number of years. We've never had an issue with that, with that site. And it's always, all the approvals on it, so I make the recommendation that we approve.
That's a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Sir, this, uh, this is your, your company?
Yes, not my company here, but I work for them, yes.
Okay.
I do the Rhode Island area and, uh, I've had the records looked at. And at this location, there has been no problems or concerns. The guys clean up after themselves, you know. Uh, they don't put signs all over the roads and, you know, and all that. It's on the tent only. That's it, you know.
And the only paperwork's in order. I don't see any issues, but, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Discussion by Council on the Action on Update of the Municipal Building Review Task Force. Mr. Nordstrom.
Good evening. Um, in your packet, um, you have a bunch of information that was sent out through Tecton that I'd like to go through. Um, I'll try to go through it fast, but at any point, if you have any questions, just ask it at the time because I'll forget at the end what, what I was talking about. So, um, beginning of April, I made a presentation and I showed you the new site plan. Hopefully, my voice carries. This is the proposed location of the new police station. Uh, less parking spaces because the building is smaller. It's spaced enough from the existing building that hopefully some construction issues will go away and hopefully be able to use that building while the new building is being constructed. Next, next item. Probably have to blow that up a little bit. I don't know how well you could see the graphics on what I sent, so, um, this is the conceptual space plan design. Uh, about 4,000 square feet less than the original proposal. Um, it still has the Sally ports, which are kind of middle-left, um, except one of the Sally ports can double as the vehicle processing area. I don't know if you remember, I think there were four garages in the original design, so that's cut down to two. With a little bit of a clarification, there will be a standalone garage on the, on one end of the property where they can keep vehicles and cones and traffic equipment and all that. So, the entrance is in the middle of the building. As opposed to the previous design, all the public activity is on the first floor. And, and you might remember that was kind of split. The, um, training room court is up on the second floor, which kind of created a whole bunch of logistical problems as far as, um, stairwells and that. So you come in through the lobby, the first area you hit is the dispatch area because that person has to be there the whole period of time. Uh, they have their own bathroom, break room. There's the, uh, men and women's toilet, uh, and interview room. When the public comes in, a lot, a lot of the activity kind of happens out in the lobby right now. This way they have their private area where they could, uh, leave with the police department. So rather than have me stand up there, I'll try to do it from here. Okay, the, um, training, community, municipal courtroom has been reduced from 1,500 square feet to 1,150 square feet. The furniture storage area, which is just off it, great, um, has been reduced. Okay, and so as you go through the secure area, um, after the dispatch area, um, that's where the records in the clerk administration is on the right. Judges' chambers a little bit above that. And then going down the hallway, all the lieutenants are in one room. All the sergeants are in one room. Uh, there's an area where the, uh, reports can be done, roll call room. A unisex toilet, custodial closet, electric room, and a rather good-sized mechanical room. Then a whole bunch of stuff that I don't necessarily understand, but I assume the council president can help me. There's a quartermaster room. Coming from the Sally port, from the left to the right, um, there's a decon area. There's an area where they, uh, all the officers, uh, put their weapons. Prisoners are entered in. There's a process, a prisoner processing section. We have four cells or actually three cells plus a holding cell, whereas before it was six cells and a holding cell. Corresponding inter, interview, interview room, custodial closet, and then, um, the room where bond issue, bonds are issued. Okay, moving up to the second floor. Part of the thing I had talked about in April is tried to design the building so that should there be a need to expand in the future, there's some expansion possibilities. If you go back one, I'm sorry. If you need to build, um, additional cells, there is the ability to move out this way. If that need arises, but on the second floor, um, we have this big gap here, um, which will be designed, designed as a floor, but it would actually be a roof. And that will be an area, if they need to expand on the second floor, that's where the expansion could take place. Same thing, the situation, the chief's office, bathroom, captain lieutenant, share of space. There's another captain's office. They, they all have different functions, which I was going to have the chief explain, but this would have been a 45-minute presentation, so. Then moving down, again, um, you have the detective division with their interview room, supply closet in the center. Is where most of the storages for, um, evidence, um, the armory, weapons cleaning, and long gun storage. And then you move into the locker room area, well, a break room, obviously. Then the locker room area, which can be expandable. So the road of traffic is, um, comes through the door and then they can go into the fitness area, which has been reduced from 1,000 to 500 square feet. Same thing with the women's staff. That's their locker room. They can go right into the fitness area. So that's the general layout, about 18,000 square feet, plus or minus. So if there's no questions, I'll get to the really boring stuff. We talk a little, I talked before about, um, elevations. All there really is, is give you a perspective of, um, the, the line of sight. So there's two options, one with a peak roof, one with a flat roof. This is the flat roof design. Again, you can see the entrance. This is facing Smithfield Road. That's the entrance in the middle. This is, um, the Merrimack Street side. This is the Elko or the opening where we could expand on the second floor. The Sally ports. Little bit more. Okay, this is, uh, top view is looking from where the playground is, looking at the back of the building. And I don't know any other way of saying this, except this is, if you had your back to Providence Street, it's, it's looking toward that side of the building. So it's almost like you'd be looking toward where Stop and Shop is and that. That's the view. The peak roof design, it's essentially the same. The difference is the roof line. So obviously, that makes, uh, the building a little bit, um, higher. So, this is the rendition of what it would look like with a flat roof. Sort of similar lines towards our, what's existing with the parapet. We had the architect run some ground-level viewpoints to see the equipment that's on the roof, how visible it was. And it really, you have, you'd really have to be spending an awful lot of time looking at it to figure out where the HVAC units are in that. And then the next slide, I think it's just a view from the opposite side. Again, from your perspective, the existing police station would be on this side. It's pretty far setback. And again, the, the peak roof, it's essentially, it's all the same square footage. So I'm not going to go through and explain because we've already seen them, but you can see the different views. Quite a bit higher, um, more visible. So, um, and that's the rendition. That's shown with a seamless metal roof. Um, there's a lot of different options. Typically, um, peak roofs are more expensive. They have some advantages, um, because you can put, uh, HVAC up in the attic space and get a little bit longer useful life. But it's quite a balancing act to be able to justify doing that from a cost-effective standpoint. So we had those two options, um, will be looked at in terms of a cost estimate. And again, just the renderings. I'll show you that. All right. Any questions?
Doesn't a peak roof, uh, last long in the sense because of snow, et cetera? Why a flat roof? But I have people that, doesn't leak early?
Well, and that's, and that's the rub. That's where, um, aside from aesthetics, I mean, some people like flat roofs, just the look of it. Some people like peak roofs. You know, you remember early on, we had given information like, um, if we proceeded with a new building, it was going to be an $80,000 a year savings. And you could kind of justify spending more money, um, for a new building rather than rehabbing the old one. You'd have to do that type of analysis here. You'd have to look at, how much money do you save in the long run by putting a peak roof? Really, until you get good, solid construction estimates, it, it's hard to say what, how, how it will work out. That's why we went with those two different designs to get prices on. Which brings me to the, uh, more difficult topic. In this environment, it's really, really difficult to get accurate cost estimations. A year ago, we were just kind of starting to get hit with the supply chain issues. Construction costs continue to rise. Inflation continues to rise. And what we have always tried to do with the construction estimates is try to project about halfway through the construction what it's going to cost. I, I don't know if anybody can really do that very well at this point in time. So we don't want to rush into things, which basically means it, we're not going to get anything on the bond issue for November. There's just, isn't a lot of time. In the meantime, we're not really taking a pause. We'll continue to work, uh, but maybe things will stabilize. What I've seen over the years, um, when we have these type of episodes in construction, after a while, people just get so skittish, they start putting projects out to bid. Because they're afraid of the money. In fact, I think I read in the paper today that the soccer stadium in Pawtucket, the developer is saying, timeout, you know, we're concerned about construction costs. We're going to hold off before we put it out to bid. So as more and more entities stop putting projects out to bid, there's less and less work for the contractors. There's better competition. And a lot of time what happens is prices start to stabilize. We have a couple of business people on the building committee and right now, they're saying the prices are changing so much, they have a hard time guaranteeing prices. They have to add factors to it and people are still proceeding with the stuff. Mostly, I would suspect because things are so slow during COVID. But eventually, these, these people are going to be doing the same type of stuff, saying, no, we can't, we can't afford to do that right now. We need to wait till the, um, economy stabilizes and we can get more accurate projections on what the cost is going to be. So, sort of where we are at this point, so the rush to try to get something for November is, we were up against it anyways. Even if we were to do a special election, um, at, uh, for the bond, I don't think the House and the Senate go into session until like January. So to get the enabling legislation, we're probably talking a year, uh, down the road before we could even, uh, get to that point. So we have time to sit back, pause, look at things. Last thing we want to do is, there's two problems. One, um, sticker shock. Have a project that's so expensive, it has no chance to pass. But more importantly, in my book, you go out for, the bond passes, uh, and three-quarters of the way through the project, you run out of money and then you have to go for more money. And we certainly don't want to do that. So I think at this point in time, um, the prudent thing to do is take a step back. We can try to talk to contractors and find out what they're thinking and have them look at the plans and maybe assist on, um, ways to save money or... So that's where we are.
So you're just going to hold off until things settle? So even if it settles high, we'll at least know that, or if it settles lower. Either way, we just, it's too volatile.
Right now, I mean, it's almost like me saying to, to each of you, I don't care how well you are as a, know the stock market. Tell me what the price of Exxon is going to be in 18 months.
Right. It's too volatile.
Yep. Maybe four years ago, five years ago, we'd have a better handle on stuff like that. But right now, it's like all over the place. So, if you don't have any questions, that brings me to the, um, invoices. Tecton's contract amendment was pretty simple. They had four tasks to do. Uh, the first in- The first invoice is for eight hundred dollars. And it's for the program adjustments that they did. Too many piles of paper over here. And that would be invoice four, four, nine, three, one, dated March thirty first, twenty twenty-two. And that would fulfill them on their program adjustments. Program adjustments is where they went in and looked and saw if they could cut spaces with adjusting needs. The second invoice is invoice number four, five, oh, one, nine. And that's from their completion of the additional design, new construction, which essentially is what I presented tonight. And that's for invoice four, five, oh, one, nine, in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Task force looked at both of these invoices and are recommending approval.
Paul, so they left us, Tecton left us with a product that at this point, if we're on hold for, if things don't settle down for another year, at that point, we could pick up right where we left off?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I think we've, we're very pleased with the design. It's kind of met all the requirements. It's smaller, gives us the advantage of expanding if we ever need to expand in the future. It includes that community room, I don't know where you all sit with that, but seems to me, there's not a lot of handicap accessible community meeting places in town. I know the task force, we have the meetings at the police station because we have a hard time booking time here. It's a training center, do the municipal court there. The chief has said that he would do two different sessions a month for court, rather than one day, one day a month, to accommodate the smaller size. So, I mean, I think it hits all the high points that we've talked about over the past year.
Kind of, to kind of answer your question, we've developed a program that, you have your program. It's like, the minimum that you need right now is in that building. And so, yeah, to answer your question, going through the process, we've come up with, this is, this is what your needs are. There's no extras in there, there's no fluff in there. These are, these are what your needs are. They shouldn't change, barring some, you know, great revelation or something. These are what the basic needs are. This is the size of your building should be. And yeah, so now we're at the point that, now we got, now we got the volatility of the market that's really, that's really wreaking havoc. And by looking at it, they're not looking at what it is today, remember that. They're looking at the cost of building it in eighteen months. And now we're at the point, now they're looking at twenty-four months or twenty-six months. And so, that's adding a lot to the cost, that escalation that they, because it's such an unknown. Guys are just carrying such a high number, and we don't know where that's going. And that's, that's what's really making it volatile, and we're like, you know what, just stop. You know, because we're not going to get a good number. And like Paul said, our fear is, we're going to get a number, the town is going to say yes, or we're going to say yes. And then when it comes time to build it in two years, we don't have the money to build it. Kind of like we're doing with the projects that we're trying to complete right now. There was never enough money to do it. We don't want, we don't want to, we don't want to go back and do that again.
Right, and to that point, when I went back today and checked, that original estimate for the larger building, they were projecting, it would be on a schedule where the bond would go in November. And they were trying to project cost to the second quarter of twenty twenty-three. Now, we're a pushout at least a year from that. But can you imagine trying to guess at this point in time, what things are going to cost in twenty twenty-three?
No.
So?
Right, my, I agree.
I can't speak for all of us, but I really want to thank you and your entire team for the time, the effort in treating it, as if you were omnipotent.
Thank you, we've got a talented group of people, they're pretty good cross-section.
Absolutely.
So?
We're not done dealing with Tecton right now. They're just doing more homework, and we haven't set another meeting date, but we will be meeting with them, we will continue to meet with them and review this. It's not, it's not like we're just stopping. Process didn't just stop there, we're going to continue to meet with Tecton as they get more information and meet with us. It's kind of like the ball's in their court right now, as they do more homework and look at different things. But it's not, it's not, we're not done, done. We're just saying, we're not, the whole, the whole point when I was pushing before for the, for the election in November, was that point of escalation going forward, to try to freeze a number going forward with that. And so, today would have been like, or Wednesday, we would have the joint meeting, that would have been a drop dead date in order to get our paperwork done before the end of June, which would have given us July to November, to make sure that people are informed about it. Without having that number now, the joint meeting on Wednesday is canceled, I told you, and I, I don't know if she forwarded to everybody. We won't have that meeting, we won't have that meeting on Wednesday because we're not, we're not ready to move forward with it. So we're just going to slow down now. There's no sense trying to hurry up to get that, because we know we're not going to meet it, so.
So we won't have any, any additional billing going forward from Tecton until we revisit?
Well, they're still doing estimating right now, so that part of it is still there.
So the estimating is part of this number here that they're going to work into? They're going to chip away at this, this amount?
That's the third task, I think.
Yeah, the ten thousand that's still due to them. On that part of it.
All right. Thanks, Paul.
So you have the invoices?
Yep.
Mr. President?
Ms. Alz.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Tecton Architects' invoice number four, four, nine, three, one, dated March thirty first, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of eight hundred dollars, per the direction of the Building Task Force and Paul Nodstrom, the Chair.
Thank you, it's a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And Mr. President, I'd also like to make a motion to approve Tecton Architects' invoice number four, five, zero, one, nine, dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of sixteen thousand, as per the direction of the task force and Paul Nodstrom, the Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. O'Hara, second, and roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Paul. Okay, discussion by council vote of the action on update of the Halliwell Review Committee. Mr. Corver, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, we met the week before last, and we talked about essentially two, two different items. One was the wetlands of the Halliwell property, having a delineation done on the property. And some of the questions that we, that was brought up was, they were looking to see how the Halliwell property could be used for outdoor activities, but we still need to figure out where the certain areas are of wetlands. The Weston and Sampson contract that we had, that only gave a class four survey. And you really need a class one, that was in the scope of, of the contract with Weston and Sampson. So it's not as though we were expecting one thing and got something different. They were instructed to provide just a basic delineation of the wetlands, which again, was considered a class four. So they are looking to, to push forward to town council, probably in the next couple of weeks to thirty days, for the town council to, to make a decision, or to at least discuss moving forward with doing a class one delineation of the wetlands of the property at Halliwell. Timeframe would be ideally sometime during the summer, where the water table is already at its lowest, between June and August. Some of the things that they discussed were walking bridges or paths. And obviously, we need to know where those wetlands are and what we can and can't do within that scope. One of the big questions that just came and come up, that just kept coming up within the committee, was how do we allow the public or residents to use the property from a nature standpoint? And, oh, one of the questions, one of the questions that came up with a class one wetlands delineation survey, we wanted to know, and hopefully, we'll get an update at this Thursday's meeting, was a class one survey done when Halliwell was run and being administered by the school? So we're going to look into that, to see if there is a class one wetlands delineation survey on file. If not, then we'll have to decide what direction we're going to go in there. That will allow the town to possibly start clearing walking trails and start doing other things. One thing that we had kind of thrown around is,
Okay, I was just.
One, one, one thing, yeah. One, one, one thing that we had kind of thrown around was, you know, we were talking about benches of the town council and having people donate benches in people's names or in honor of them. One of the other things that we were talking about was possibly walking bridges, maybe having those be something where town residents might want to invest in something like that, a walking path, or a plaque somewhere around there. So just things that we were just tossing out, ideas. And then the second, the second topic that we had talked about was furthering the conversation with the YMCA in the potential, potential direction there. Some of the takeaways that we got with interacting with the Y is that the town would need some sort of quasi-master plan. The YMCA was pretty adamant about working with the town, but they do need to know that there's some sort of direction that the town would be looking to go in. Possibly an outside engineering or master plan. They would then collaborate or partner with that outside firm as well as the town. And so, again, that's something that the Halliwell Review Committee was tasked to do. And we're kind of getting, they're kind of getting at the tail end of that to, to make that recommendation to town council. And that's, that's all I have for now. Any questions?
So Weston and Sampson's report doesn't cover good enough the wetlands?
Correct. So think of it this way, if, if wetlands was blue, it just showed blue. No, no depth, no, it just, it needs to be more in-depth than what they provided, was what I was doing.
Would you think that the Halliwell Review Committee is going to be in the same predicament that the Building Review Committee is going to be, is currently in? That you really, we really can't lock ourselves down to, things are so volatile right now, we really can't even start thinking about building anything down there?
Well, I don't think it's so much the, the actual construction side of things, but there are other things that we can do that aren't necessarily inflation-related. For example, doing a wetlands delineation, the cost is, is what the cost is going to be. It's not inflation-related. Same thing with doing walking trails, just so we have an idea of what we can use from a, from a nature standpoint, as opposed to just leaving it desolate. Without, without having residents being able to use it.
I think first and foremost, we've got to get those buildings down. We've got to get them down. Start with the clean slate. I don't doubt you.
It hasn't gone out, it hasn't gone out the bid yet?
Yeah, that has to be the very first, you know, before we even do anything. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Steve.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, here we go again on this one. Discussion by council vote of the action on dedication, dedication of bench to Claire Woodworth, Lynn Coleslick, Richard. Now, this is on the agenda as, of being put on by Ms. Alz and Ms. O'Hara, but that is incorrect. I requested this to be put on the agenda, and I'll tell you why. I just didn't think it was, I thought about it, and I didn't feel comfortable about, given our responsibilities to another, another committee and asking them to make decisions that we should be making, since that's what we're here for, is to make those kind of decisions. So I would personally, I'm just going to tell you where I stand on this. I don't see a problem. Each, each, each made a very good case for the benches. I don't see a problem with approving the benches. I don't think it's going to be a situation where anybody comes out of the woodwork, because, Ray, how much were these benches? They were a lot of money, weren't they?
They're paying for their own.
That's what I mean, right. No, 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 I just, I, so, no, I'm with you here, we're going to, so that's my point.
First of all, I made a mistake with Woodworth. Her, it wasn't her, the intention. Today I went up, and I couldn't remember her name that day because it was unfamiliar.
Okay.
But for three weeks after that, it became very familiar. And I, I remember as far as the VFW, all the things that were done there. God, they even had, had a haunted house, they had programs for the kids up there. She was very active. And when I read that little boy's letter, I was struck. But you know, first and foremost, I'm a veteran. And, but then when they said, well, you have the VFW, and the name of the group, and relations, and it was like, I could almost see it, because I remember her being the only person, I know it better than I am. So that night, when I went in, I don't know why I said it, but I know the Woodworts have a beautiful granite bench in that little park. Hand-chiselled, and sold to Southberg on one side. And then there are other people that they bought bricks and put their name on it, which is about one thread full. Maybe we could finish that program and put things that way. But I'd like to see a family like this, that working class, everything they did was for the love of the town. And the family wanted to put the bench there because she goes walking, and she said it'd be a nice place to sit, because she was part of the people that planted the tree.
Right.
And you're not going to put it right next to a box, we're not going to hurt that tree, trust me. It goes further, that you can see as it grows. And it became such a big thing.
And, and that's why we're going to vote on it and, and get things?
But I don't think, too, and her husband has a, has a past named after him, too. How many things can you be named after?
Honestly, because it's, personally, it's, I don't see, you want a bench, and I think it's a very good cause, I, I agree with it a hundred percent.
And they are paying for it?
Ms. Alz mentioned about a bench, I, I think it's a very good cause, and I don't see a problem with that. I support both of them.
But we're going backwards.
What's that?
We're going backwards then.
We're not going?
We are, we, we discussed this over two meetings, and we remanded back to Pox and Rec.
And I think that was a mistake, that was a mistake.
Let me finish now, let me finish. And we remanded it back to the, to the solicitor, to give us first reading on the ordinance, so we could change that ordinance, so Pox and Rec could evaluate and find out where we wanted to put benches, or where they thought we needed benches, how many benches we wanted. And then they would refer back to us, and we would approve benches for other people.
Right, and that's a lot to do for no reason, exactly.
Why do we have to shoot here, here, here for a bench?
I agree, that's, I mean, a hundred percent. There's no need to make such a big deal of it. Somebody wants a bench, they've come before the council, will make a decision as they come before us, one at a time, because what I was getting, what I was getting at, right, these are not cheap benches. So it's not like people are going to be coming out of the woodwork, looking for benches all over town.
But where are we going to put, where are we going to determine where we're going to put the benches on town?
We'll make those decisions as it comes before us, that's why.
When they come before us, they want it there.
And then it's going to be too hodgepodge.
It's not going to be hodgepodge, because we're not going to have a, a, see, here we go with the, I just wanted to call the vote and approve.
We won't have, we won't have any kind of a plan of where we're going to put benches. How many benches are we going to put?
You think there's going to be that many people that are supposed to be on a bench?
No, there should be, there should be, otherwise it's going to be.
This is small potatoes, Paul.
It's going to be willy-nilly.
This is small potatoes. We should, someone wants a bench, they come before us, they get a councilor, recommend a bench, we put, we call to vote, and we, and we vote on it. It's small potatoes, this is really nothing in the whole scheme of things. Someone wants a bench, give them a bench. Seriously, it's really easy stuff. This is not, this is, of all the things we do, this is like,
It's, it's not difficult, but we need to have a plan of where we're going to put benches. That's my point, we just can't have someone?
It depends where they want the bench put. It's not your plan, it's theirs, and they come forth and they ask.
Yeah, if it comes before the council, you don't like what they're, what they're recommending, and you say, no, we don't, we don't think that's a good place for a bench, I vote no.
Council members, may I weigh in?
Please.
One, one thing to keep in mind is, I've said this previously, we've had folks in town that have dedicated pretty much most of their life to contributing and doing things. Maybe they,
Maybe they or the family cannot afford a bench. So, what I would suggest is that we consider in the budget that we put away $2,020, $200 a year. Council makes a decision who gets that bench.
One person a year.
At, at, at town expense. Otherwise, what you're gonna have is patricians, people that have the money can pay for a bench and folks that can't pay for it won't get a bench.
These aren't rich people that they're sacrificing for that. It's not as if they can just pull a wad of money out. Her family members are coming forth with the money because she's like the head of the clan. She helps all the nieces and nephews. She's the mother. And, and they just want something and she loves that place so much that it would be honoring her during her lifetime. She's 81, gonna be 82. I thought it, it was a wonderful thing and, and the more people called me, and, and let me tell you, they weren't, they weren't the big ones that can pull out a couple of flowers. And that means a lot to me. It's a request, people that are saying, she's done this for us all our lives. Let's do this for her. Voila.
Mr. Penagask, go, go ahead. I know you've got some thoughts on this. Yeah, I know. It's, it's, I, I, it is ridiculous. It's a hundred, I thought we...
I, I thought we jumped over this bridge last time.
I, I just wanted to bring it and put it on the agenda so we could get, put it behind us and move on to the next.
I think, I think I can agree that it's kind of a simple thing, but it really isn't a simple thing. Because you could have a trail of 50 people here some night all saying, I wanna, I wanna a bench here, 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 here and here. And I'll tell you what, from my position, I don't want that. So, the easiest one, thing was put it to a committee or somebody to, so you don't have all these people tying up a half hour at a town council meeting about a bench. We, we've wasted so much time on this. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. I don't think you're gonna get a ton of people, but I gotta be honest with you. I still want some input in where the, where the bench is going. I'm not having a resident tell me they're putting a bench in Site A and B because I may not want it in Site A or B for maintenance reasons. And I had, I, I tried to stay out of this until tonight because this ball just keeps going around and around and around. It's got nothing to do with who or where. It does matter where these benches do go though.
And it also doesn't have to do with monetary, like how wealthy a family is.
Can I hear you, council?
I said it shouldn't also be constantly mentioned on how wealthy someone is and how wealthy someone is not. And it's, it's totally, I just said that I thought that bench because Woodworth brought that tree into town. So, who should have, who should have a bench under that tree other than the family who brought it to town? And, you know, it, it's just gone way out of control. So, I, I, we, I agree that I think if we're gonna do something, then it should be, it should be set in stone that this is the process we go by and this is how it works. Because if we have no say in it, they're just gonna be popping up on the side of the road somewhere. And it's just ridiculous. It's, it's totally ridiculous what's, what's happening.
So, we, I think we do have a say in it. Everyone, if someone comes before us, they want a bench. We, we prove, we, we prove or disapprove each request as it comes before us at, one at a time. And then we can defer to Ray and ask, you know, is this a good, is this a good, safe place for a bench? You agree it's, if he says it's not a good place for a bench, we tell him it's not a good place for a bench. I don't, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be a rush of people in here. We just handle each one as it comes before us individually. That's my suggestion. That's why I just wanted to put these on, this on the agenda. I'm sorry, apparently I, I ignited something again. I just wanted to put this back on the agenda and, and vote on it and, and get it behind us and give these good people their benches.
And I think that can be done, but I thought that by giving it to a committee, puts that decision not on you until the very end. A recommendation, no different than any, any other type of recommendation. That committee, I would be part of that committee, which I am part of that committee. And then I would have my say in that. And then that recommendation would come from the committee chair and/or myself or whatever. But that's already been cleared out. We're clearing out who the people are, what their background is, what, what they've done for this town. I'm not going by one person. I mean, I could probably get 10 people to go up there and talk about somebody and they're all lies. I don't know that, but we're gonna find that out. But it shouldn't be a half hour conversation with the town council.
I agree.
It should be, here's my recommendation, yes or no? I still think it should go to a committee.
With some type of a plan of where the benches are gonna be.
There has to be a criteria for doing this. You just can't stop popping benches.
No, no, but I mean, we need to determine where we want benches in town. That's, that's my point.
I'm not in favor of it over here, to be honest with you. It's all wetland. It's wet until like August.
Just as, just as a side, I'd like to have you have an August come out there and, and check that tree because I think there are branches that need to be pruned out of that tree. It needs to be checked. My favor is right now from the water leak in the road for years and years, that tree's gonna drown. It's gonna die.
Mountain Dew it.
Just like, you know, we have certain spots where we have adopter spots in town. Like, we, we just don't put adopter spots wherever we want. There's, there's certain spots, spots that we have them. And even if you request one, you may not get it because that's not a spot that is designated for an adopter spot. Just like, so we need to follow the same...
I actually designate where the spot goes for adopter spots. The people, they wanna adopt a spot, they adopt the spot. They don't tell, tell us where we're gonna, we only have so many. We have 22. I'll tell them if there's one vacant, they can have it. They can suggest. But there is a process for adopter spots.
So, let me ask that, you would not, you don't want me to call a vote on your bench?
On mine? No, because I think it should, we should follow some, some sort of protocol that everyone else will follow. Because if, if we're just gonna stop putting them up, there might be 10 other people that wanted one under the tree, but now we can't, you know, it, it needs to be something that we're gonna put out there, that this is something you can do. And if the family wants to, to put this out for another family member or, and maybe reintroduce the adopter spots if there's any available, you know, that maybe kinda fell by the wayside. Like, this stuff just, we're gonna do this stuff and we should do it right and we should make sure that the whole community is aware of it and that this is where we plan on doing them.
See, I'm thinking that we don't need, really need to have a, go to a committee for such a simple, such a simple thing as a bench.
But it's not because what if there's numerous people out there that want that spot? And my point was is that the family gave the tree to the town, so who else would be better than to do that? And I understand, but all I'm saying is that's, that's...
I'm not, I'm not even weighing in on who the benches are for. We just need a plan for benches. I'm not taking a side on who gets a bench and who doesn't. I'm just saying we need a plan where we're gonna put benches in this town. We, that's gonna be out there before we even stop putting them in. That's my point. I'm not taking a side on, yeah, this one gets one, that one doesn't get one. I stated my case when it first came up that there, there's a list, you know, a phone book of lists of people that did things in this town. You know?
All right. I, I just, my thinking is that this is such a minor, minor thing that do we really need to go and, and ordinance to come up with a place, you know, with how we're gonna do the benches? And do we need to create a committee to come up with? This is a small, it's such small potatoes, but...
But we weren't, we're not creating a new committee. We're just giving a new charge to a committee that's already existing. And because it's created by ordinance, we gotta change the ordinance. That's all. It's, it's, it's a minor detail, legal detail that we have to follow if we wanna do that. That's what I thought we discussed and I thought that's the direction we were going in.
This is, this is the line that we, we have the budget coming up that we just need to table it for a while.
Okay. All right.
So, let, let me ask a question then before we finish this then.
Go ahead.
Are we gonna have the solicitor draw up a first reading so we can change the ordinance? So, Poxon Rec is gonna review this? I thought that's where we were two weeks ago, but obviously we're not there again. So, we need, we need to clarify that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a question. Could the, the Director of Public Works indicate that there's a process for adopter spot? I'm wondering, why don't we, now I'm just thinking out loud, would it make sense just to follow that same process? Because he actually, I think it seems it needs to be more of an administrative decision about location and maintenance as opposed to a committee decision about who is deserving. See, I think they're two different functions. I think the, I think the location and maintenance, that bench is okay here because it will be maintained and it's appropriate and it's safe. We don't, you don't think that's a committee decision? I think that's, what I'm hearing from, and I, I, I'm only saying this because you mentioned, I don't mean to drag you in, Mr. Director, but you mentioned you got your hands around the adopter spot and this sounds so much like that as far as location and maintenance.
Right. And the adopter spot program has dwindled somewhat in the past few years. Ages of the, it was a volunteer group is how it started off many years ago. But the end result was always that I had to weigh in or my Poxon Recreation Supervisor would have to weigh in about locations. Now, the adopter spots are a little different. They're mostly on state islands. We have to get permission from DOT to even put that island on that and, and continue that. The wording on the sign is, is specific. I, I, I guess my point is, you, you just, you're wasting way too much time on this. It, it's, it's a very simple thing, but it, it has to have a process. And there's a process for the adopter spots and it can be a process. As you said, doesn't matter who or where, but at the end, it's a recommendation from myself to the council to put a bench here or here or here. Because there's a maintenance program that has to go along with that. If not, I'm gonna lose control of all, all my, my green. I'll have benches, I don't care if it's 2 or 50. But there has to be a process. I, I've never seen anything like this.
I, I agree. All right. Not to further complicate things, but instead of going to a committee and doing an ordinance and everything, would you be willing to identify several locations throughout town where we could possibly put benches and then we'll revisit?
Sure. I mean, whoever is looking for it could submit a request to the town clerk or to myself directly. It doesn't matter. And I'll sit down with my foreman and we'll, I'll put a process together for it. But you can be assured that when I come before you with a recommendation, it's going to be in the location that we find suitable for putting this bench. And now, if you wanna throw in $2,000, that's one bench per year.
Yeah, I know. But that's why if, if the family wanted to pay for it, just like they pay for adopt, you pay for your own adopter spot.
Which is, which is okay. Adopter spots are 3, 325. These are 18, $2,000.
You lose money on adopt. There's no money being made on adopter spot.
No, I'd lose money.
Just paying for your guys to take care of it.
Yeah, we used to have a kind, I, I lose money, so my, I take care of the adopter spots just to make them look nice because they should look nice. But it's more of an advertisement for a business or a person. But I, I think I'm, I'm getting a little off.
Yeah.
Topic here.
Ray, if this is the vision you have and I believe in your department, let's go that way. But because you've made it such a way, I can only say I don't wanna go against you in any way. You're doing a good job. And I think you see where I'm coming from and we'll absolutely work together.
I, I see where everybody's coming from. And that's, that's fine, but I'm trying to like kinda push it off. You know, as the council said, there's more important things coming down the road. Benches is not an important issue right now. We, we can deal with this in the future. So, I have no problem taking on that task and have my supervisors work with me on that and make a recommendation at the time.
All right. So, we'll table it until Ms. Penagask and do this.
Yeah, until somebody submits a...
You can work with Poxon Rec on your own.
Excuse me?
You can work with Poxon Rec on your own. We don't need to change the ordinance to have Poxon Rec look at it with you.
Nope. So, yeah, we won't need a change there.
That's fine then. You're welcome, David.
Discussion by, discussion by council, vote on the action on seeking a grant writer for the town of North Smithfield for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Scourge?
So, since, since we last spoke on, on this topic, I ended up reaching out to four grant-writing companies that, that contract out. And I asked them all consistent questions. One was what do they charge for their services? Consistently, they said either stipend-based, which would essentially be annually or broken down on a monthly basis. And then the second was per diem. Per diem in the sense where they will, we present to them an idea of where we want them to look for a particular grant in a particular area. They will then do research for us. If they find one that kinda fits the objective of what we're looking to, to go in, whether it's economic development, conservation, water and sewer, fire department, they will then present it to us. At that point, we can decide as a town as to whether or not we're going to give them the okay to move forward in that direction. At that point, we pay them as if they were to, as if the grant were to be approved. Obviously, you know, we don't know if it's going to do, going to, but, but they said that's what a lot of municipalities do in our size as opposed to just paying them an annual or, or monthly stipend. So, that was the first question. The second one was, I asked them, what do, what do they specialize in? And, and the kinda feedback that I got was, even though they're out of state, so all of, none of them were in Massachusetts, none of them were in New England. The closest one that I reached out to was actually in upstate New York. Other ones were in California, one in Texas and one in the Midwest. But all of them consistently said that with grant writing, it doesn't necessarily matter what state you work with a firm. The skeleton itself is all the same. It's just a matter of, once they dive in to see what state grants are available, either from the federal aspect kinda trickling down on the state level, it's all pretty much the same. It's just they're dressed up differently. Okay? As far as what the requirements are, if there's any matches, certain other specific wording that might be related to demographics of the state or the municipality or whatever. I then asked as far as a match, because I know that was brought up by Council, Councilman Vadiney, last, last time it was brought up as far as the match. And again, consistently, they said a worst-case scenario, again, depending on the grant, that there could be a, up to a 52% skin in the game for the municipality to, to have those funds in order to collaborate with the grant that's approved. But he says realistically, you're probably looking at anywhere, he says some grants he's worked on has been as low as a 2% financial responsibility from municipality to an average of about 10 to 20%. I did reach out to one that specializes in economic development, which I thought was interesting. But obviously, ones that we've seen in the past has been related to water and sewer and some grants that you can get for certain fire department equipment. And then I had reached out to the finance director and kinda coming up with a, with a figure of what we can kinda present to the budget. And, you know, we kinda looked at what North Providence and Cumberland were paying for this particular grant writer that's currently employed with, with the town of Cumberland. But obviously, we're not the size of Cumberland, so, you know, I think we're, we're kinda looking at somewhere a little bit less than, than what Cumberland is paying for that, that area. But I think, you know, my takeaway was it would probably make sense to do more of a per diem base and find out what's available based on our needs. And I'm not sure if an RFP needs to go out, but it's gonna be very difficult to find a grant-writing service provider that is specific in municipalities. Because you might find one and it might be really good, but they may focus only on nonprofits or they may focus on other entities where they don't have the background of those federal or state municipal-type grants. Any questions?
Really did your homework.
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's the direction that the Budget Committee was looking at. They didn't wanna necessarily hire one. They wanted that we get one on board and pay them either per diem or pay them a percentage of grants that they get. That's what the Budget Committee was, was looking at.
And there are some people like that.
So, I just wanna say you, you, we have to be very cautious on paying them a percentage of what they get because there's certain laws where that doesn't allow it. Right.
Absolutely.
The administrative fee is not included in the grant. But that's what the Budget Committee is looking at. They're not looking for us to hire somebody. They're looking for us to hire either per diem or, or they get a re, they get the administration fee that goes with that grant.
They actually are, they put in $20,000 in the budget that will be recommended to you all for a grant writer. So, they are going that route, whereas per diem.
I spoke to a former student who I saw a couple of years ago and she's been doing this for 20 years. Writes for Lincoln, Cumberland, North Providence. She was on her way up to Springfield when she got back to me, but she's... But she's been doing this. I think it would not cost us a dime to have Paul interview her, see if she's a good fit. And the way I look at it, it's not gonna cost us for this. She has 20 years of experience. And to last 20 years and do well is pretty good.
If I may, Mr. President, Councilor Harris contacted me last week, said she had someone that has a tremendous amount of grant writing history. This individual contacted me last Thursday night. Shame on me, I didn't get back to this individual till this morning and say, I really would like to have a conversation with you about opportunities. So I'm awaiting the return call to just delve into that. But let's get a feel for, and grant writing is, is a funny beast. You have somebody in California. I, I don't mean to be pessimistic, I, but they're gonna be calling up, speaking to the water department, the planning department, the finance department. Where if we had someone a little bit more local, maybe more in tune with us. As, as you know, two very successful grants were written by the planning department. One was for Maury Tower, and, sorry, the second one was by Maura Beck for the extension on St. Paul Street for a water line. Planning Department submitted two grants. One was rejected because of the size of our community. Now, please, press, don't, don't keep calling me and calling me, but we have some wonderful, wonderful news that's going to come. We just have to wait till the federally elected officials have their press release. But the planning board and the water authority, uh, water department have done tremendous because they know what they're looking for. So in essence, when we go out and get a grant, and I'm not advocating we keep it that way. We get a grant writer, once they get into the fold and they understand, it'll become pretty efficient. Because my concern is the planning department and the water authority and everybody getting, takes a lot of time to do that research. So, and I would assume make out of you and me, that these people will be calling them up. I, I think grant write is a wonderful idea, but we just have to look at the workload and how much contact they're gonna have to have with us. If they're out in California, I say to them, yeah, we're on 146 Eddie Dowling Highway. It's like, yeah, okay, where's that? You know, so we're gonna need someone, I think, a little local if we can't find someone. And Ms. O'Hara does have that contact. If I may suggest Council O'Hara and Carville, if you're talking, maybe one of the, the four that you spoke to, Council Carville, which would be nice.
Or if he would want to be seated at that time, but she was willing. I mean, grew up in this town, still in the state surprisingly, a lot of young people leave. And, well, young people, she has to be, she's about 53 now, so she's been doing it over 20 years.
And you had her as a student?
Yes, I did.
Good. Thank you. Good job.
Doesn't make me a hundred.
Okay, moving on. Is she, do you want to talk about benches?
Oh, God.
All right, a little humor there. Discussion by council vote of the action on donation of 2001 HME pumper fire truck to Rhode Island Fire Academy. Chief?
So keeping in line with what we're doing with our fire apparatus, we're currently about to take delivery of the new fire engine that we, we purchased last year. That's gonna be delivered hopefully this week. So now that's going to put out of service that 2001 HME fire pumper.
Is that the one that we bought from Mason though?
No.
No, we're keeping that one. It's the other one.
Correct. So typically, what would happen, what happened with the last one was we stripped what equipment was salvageable off of it. We send it up to, up to Ray at DPW, and I believe the former administrator auctioned that off for a small amount of money. So in return, because the Fire Academy actually had to borrow it for our academy class that we had down there for some of the light burns, Director Pierre expressed an interest in taking it from us. And in turn, he offered two spots in the upcoming Fire Academy on August the 29th. Currently, the tuition to get into the academy is $3,250 per person that goes in. So that's a $6,500 value. My honest opinion, I don't, I don't think you're gonna get anywhere near that kind of money if you were to, to try to sell that outright. Between the time it's gonna take to, to get a buyer, it's really of no use to any fire department, really, a front-line, line fire department. This, this would be great for the academy. It gives the new recruits some driving experience and it gets them at the pump, learning how to pump the apparatus and things of that nature. So I think this is a win-win for us as well. It reduces our, our costs for any new recruits that we put in, you know, by $6,500 bucks next time we, we have somebody who has to go in.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the chief?
Would it only be good for this class or they're gonna give us two spots in the future academy?
Two, two spots whenever we need them. Correct.
Because we don't need two spots right now.
We need one.
Need one.
Yeah, we need one.
Now, if I may, the, the chief did talk about the auctioning of a previous piece of equipment. This is not new, donating. I, I believe, Chief, correct, please, if I'm wrong, I think we, either it was during your tenure or prior to your tenure, we did donate and we had some of the recruits go through the academy, so.
Correct, that was for the ladder truck, correct. So that, that truck, that wasn't a total donation though. They also gave us a monetary amount. I want to say it was like $12,000 or something like that, plus the three, the seats in the academy as well. Where this is just the two seats and, and no cash.
That we had.
I'm sorry?
That was the quint that we had?
Yes.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to approve the chief's request?
Mr. President?
Miss Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation of the, what is, what truck is it?
HME.
2001 HME pumper fire truck.
Of the 2001 HME pumper fire truck to the Rhode Island Fire Acad, Fire Training Academy in blew up two open seats for a future Fire Academy.
Thank you. It's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Discussion by council vote of the action on award of bid for purchase of Lifeline Rescue. Chief?
Yes.
Still on the floor.
So this is, and staying on our schedule of vehicle replacement, this is to replace our 2015 Ford, which is rescue number one over at the St. Paul Street Station. That truck currently has about 110,000 miles on it. I'd like to get moving on this because keeping in with the theme of the 18 to 24 months supply chain, that's exactly what's happening with this. In speaking with the folks from Specialty Vehicle, the demand for 2022 F-550s, as the rescue cab is, it's just way oversold, so we're never gonna get one. So now, we are forced to have to get in line to purchase a 2023, which they don't even start building until September. So we're looking at about 24 months before we even see this truck, so.
They're gonna hold the price?
I'm sorry?
They'll hold that price?
They will, yes. And then the, you know, even at that, at the 24 months, now rescue one that which it would be replacing, you know, we're looking at about 150, 160,000 miles by the time we actually see the truck. So we're getting into that area where we need to think about replacing it.
Hard miles too, and I.
Hard miles, yes.
But even with that number of miles on it, it's still running, we're not like in a, it's not being in maintenance and it's not constantly on the tow truck.
What, what is becoming an issue is the reserve, the spare that we have now. That is a 2,000, of course, I forgot to write the year down, but that, that has 150,000 miles on it right now. We've, we've put about $18,000 in maintenance into that. So, you know, that's been here for quite some time. I want to say it's an '05, if I'm not mistaken. So I'd like to get this process going so we can get the contract signed and get in line for the 2023 and get the process going, and then we're, we're pretty much on schedule.
And they'll hold the price and we only pay when we take delivery?
Correct.
Cynthia, how much is in that account?
It's about, it's a little over a million dollars currently. Does that sound right, chief? No?
No.
That's what I have in my records.
At last check, for March's numbers, it was 604, if you.
As of February?
When you back out the, the payment for the.
Oh, that's right, the payment, because that's prepayment. You're right.
March 31st, there was 604.
Payment for the pumper truck.
Correct.
Right, we paid for that.
Correct, that's already been, we front-loaded that, if you remember correctly.
We prepaid that, so that's under a different balance sheet. You're right. It's about 600.
So it's around, it's around 600,000.
Yeah, they have plenty of money. And we have it to the point that every year, we have enough money to buy another apparatus. And the chief knows when that time comes because he comes with the, the bid for me, so.
Actually, this is, this is the last piece of apparatus, and we'll be in good shape right now. And now we can get onto our purchasing process, our, our purchasing schedule. 12 years for pumpers and, and seven years for rescues, so we'll, we'll be in good shape for a while. But keeping in mind also, as, as much as the, the account has isn't in it right now, we're not gonna pay until it gets here, but we're also generating, you know,
More revenues.
Our half is like 300,000 every, every year, so we'll, we'll be fine. I would assume so, yeah.
Mr. President?
Miss Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the bid for Specialty Vehicles, Inc. in the amount of $351,692 for a new rescue to replace our 2015 Ford F-50 Lifeline Rescue.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Under, under discussion. If, if you look at those bids that came in, one company was 77 weeks out for delivery. One company is 70 weeks out for delivery, and, and these guys are 30 weeks out for delivery once they get the truck.
Correct.
So like the chief says, you're not gonna see this thing under the Christmas tree. That's not, that's not gonna happen. It's gonna, we'll be in another budget cycle before we, before we see that truck.
Maybe two.
But that, that, it's regardless of who we buy it from. That's just the backlog on them. Which is kind of surprising. Took less time to get the pumper.
One of the fire chiefs that was here tonight from South Kingstown, he's purchasing a Dodge. Thought maybe he would be able to escape that. Same thing.
Same thing.
18 months.
You can't get those trucks right now.
No.
Three 50s, four 50s, five 50s, you can't get them.
Sure. And the cost is ridiculous.
Anything else? Roll call, Joanne.
Yes, Al, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, chief.
Chief, will there be a contract for the town administrator to sign? Okay, so I don't know if they need.
Do we need to, do we need to authorize the administrator to sign that contract?
Mr. President, can I make a motion to have the administrator sign the contract between the town of North Smithfield and Specialty Vehicles, Inc. for the purchase of the unused 2023 Ford F-550 four-by-four custom-built Lifeline Superliner?
Thank you. That's, do we have a, that's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Al? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Discussion by council vote of the action on penalty and tax adjustments. Mr. Hazus?
Yes, I'm asking the town council to approve the following tax adjustments. It's all motor vehicles. One is for Donald Shapples Plumbing and Heating. Also for Ronald Chapel for 2015 and 14. Elizabeth Ray for 2015 through 2017. All total in the amount of $1,958.89, and it's due to deceased.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the tax adjustments in the amount of $1,958.89 as per the direction of the finance director.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Vadnay?
You have tax adjustments. Is this the same thing as an abatement, Cynthia?
No, it's not. An abatement is when we make a mistake, an adjustment is we're, we're just adjusting it.
So we're just, we're just writing this off as bad debt.
Yeah, that's how we do it, just so the audit is the distinguished, the distinguished, yeah, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Discussion by council vote of the action on proposed resolution to authorize the town administrator to hire attorney Douglas Smith regarding plat six, lot 31, to be preserved as open space for the town. Mr. Carullo? Okay, please.
Basically, this germinated from MJ Perry, who put together a list of properties that were delinquent in taxes. This one surfaced up to the top. 6.61 acres, it's off Westwood Road and Norwood Road. And they've been delinquent in taxes for 10 years. Total amount of $10,567,000. So this was, the form was put together by the town solicitor to engage attorney Doug, excuse me, Doug Smith, attorney, not to exceed 4,000, that's a high range, for the paperwork, checking all, make sure it's all in order so the town can take this property. Very beneficial. If you look at the map on the back page, you can see all the lots and houses around it. I, I, I just think, you know, you've heard me say this a million times, get land, actually buy land because they ain't making anymore. And this would be quite well-received by the residents over in Woodlawn and Hillview Oakdale, Westwood Road. So that, that's what's being before you for consideration.
Have you ever looked at that piece of land?
I have.
There's a reason that there's no houses built on it. It's not really suitable to be built on and it's, that's why.
Well, I don't know. There is some upland to it.
Yeah, but then you have to extend the roads and it is legendary, and then it drops way down low, and so it's, there's a reason, but, but I agree with you. It's open, let's pick it up. Pick it up, because it's more or less, it's more or less picking up like a tax sale. Yes. And so we, we pick it up, we write off the, the tax sale and we own it.
We couldn't, we actually tried to reach out to the owners, but I think they're deceased. We can't locate them, so.
It's California where they're located.
Yeah, the last address was California. They, when we looked at their age, they would have been in their hundreds. So we're just trying to clear up the title.
Just as, as the town will open, oh, excuse me, town will maintain, not maintain, the town will own it. And there is, I believe there might be a buildable envelope on this, so it won't be built upon. Neighbors can enjoy it. There are, the kids are already in there playing around, getting wet and.
The reason that we, that we're recommending a Doug Smith to do this, is that's what he does?
I, I asked the, I asked Solicitor Reguliozzi to find some of those proficient and reasonable.
The tax, the tax sale attorney doesn't foreclose the right of redemption. It's kind of a specialty.
Yep.
So I contacted people for my title company and Doug Smith came, recommended.
Okay.
So Glenn Andrioli doesn't, Andrioli, he doesn't do that kind of work, so.
Okay. We have an idea of the cost, approximate?
I think they said under 4,000.
Not, not to exceed.
Okay.
So would we have to, this, this, we'd have to do a second. This is just the first reading, correct?
No, this is a resolution.
This is a resolution.
Okay, yeah, all right. Sorry. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. President?
Mr. Vadnay?
Make a motion that we approve the resolution of the town council, resolution approving the foreclosure of the right of redemption on tax assessors plat six, tax assessors lot 31 for the purpose of preserving open space.
It's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, can we just include in that motion that it's not to exceed the cost of $4,000?
Okay, Joanne, you got that? Yes.
It's in the resolution.
Okay, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Discussion by Council of Action on Award a Bid for Townwide Road Improvement. Mr. Penegas.
Good evening. Uh, before you, is a recommendation for the 2022, 23 townwide improvement, road improvements. There were, uh, on April 28th, five sealed bids were opened. I believe you guys have the attached spreadsheet. The lowest responsive bidder was T. Mayozi. The base bid was 877,933 and 46 cents. And the alternate was 215,724 and 76 cents. Our engineering consultant, Par Corporation, was giving, was given all of the bids for their review. And that letter should be attached to your packages also, uh, the two-page letter, um, saying that this, there were no discrepancies in their bid at all. We've worked with Mayozi in the past, uh, in 2019 when we went out to bid last time. They, they do a, a good job. They do as good a job as anyone else, so, um, asphalt and everything's a little high right now, but, uh, it's not going to come down anytime soon, that I don't see. Uh, we have, this past winter, did, did a number on our roads. Uh, we still work off of a, a plan that was developed by Casali Engineering in 2014 as a guide. And I still use my supervisor's expertise in checking the roads and we have a list of roads that's been published. Um, and we have many more roads that, that need to be, uh, addressed. So I'm looking for your permission to, uh, approve T. Mayozi as the lowest responsive bidder and for the administrator to sign.
Mr. Igliosi, uh, should I recuse? I do business, they're a customer of mine, Mayozi?
I, yeah, I would, I would, I would do that.
Okay.
If you'd ask before, we could clear it, but because you're on the spot.
Yeah, okay.
What's the, um, what's the alternate? Like base price and alternate price? What's?
The alternate, um, and the, and the reason it's not, well, um, the alternate is for drainage and, uh, the reconstruction of a section of Pound Hill Road. I don't have those numbers right in front of me. Uh, it's, it's just past Pine Court. Uh, we've had drainage issues with two houses, three houses in that area. It's when you come down Pine Court and then you start to go up the circle by the, uh, auto pots that it's a mess over there.
That's what we just had, the engineering work. We just went out and awarded that.
Right. So in order for us, the reason they're not part of the base bid is, uh, Par is anticipating possibly a year for D E M. to get back and approve, uh, the wetland Issues over there, right of way, which Dupree Engineering is going to take care of. So that's, and that's one of the, it's, we learned back in the two, when we had the 2.5 million dollars, our consultants were telling us, come out with a base bid So that you don't leave the bid with not enough money to produce the roads. So you always come out with a base bid lower than what you really have and then you do your alternates. So we have alternates. So these, these right here, I knew I had around a million dollars. So these numbers actually came in Close to what we really anticipated. I, I was actually kind of surprised, given what's going on in, in the world right now.
Do the alternates include any additional roads possibly?
No, that's just that one alternate. So we have some other roads we're putting together for design work and stuff like that, so If we anticipate getting more funds in the next budget, then we probably can squeeze in a few more roads.
Do we have a?
I'm sorry, is it kind of like a change order? Is that what they, no?
No, that's, this is the bid. This is the bid.
I know, but the alternate, so it's just the one drainage issue, that's it?
No, this is, this is a drainage work, Pound Hill Road you're talking about?
Just what the total price is for alternate, like what, what does that?
Oh, that's for the reclamation and the pavement.
Okay.
The drainage work, we, we actually take on, but I take the, uh, the drainage part of that, out of that number.
Right, I, I actually copied, uh, the bid specs that went out. If anybody wants to get into depth on this, no pun intended. Do you want to see this? Do you want me to explain it or?
I just didn't know what the alternate, what that was, what was entailed in the alternate.
It's about 125 feet, uh, on Pound Hill Road, up to 125 feet, uh, width 17 to 22 feet wide. That's for drainage to alleviate the flooding and stuff that's going on over there.
And I'm sure there's unit pricing in there if they hit ledge or other issue.
Correct.
It's all per, per unit, unit pricing.
And that's why Par goes right through it. They went through every one of the bids because in the past, some of the vendors play game with flaggers and, so. I feel confident with them reviewing it, um, and the price actually is better than what I anticipated, to be quite honest with you at this time.
Do we have a start and finish date on that?
Not yet.
Can we get one? I know, I know the last time we, things got delayed.
Yep.
Because he'll get busy, because he does bid low. He's, he's a low guy in a lot of places and he gets busy. And then they, they leave the town and they don't come back and then we, we're into the next season. He'll hold his price, but he won't come and do it till next season.
No, I, I think we have a history. Uh, I think we kind of squared some of that away, uh, with the owner. We have a good working relationship, uh, with them. I don't anticipate that. Some of the, some of the delays were because of drainage work in the past. Um, we're, we're in pretty good shape on these roads for the drainage work, so. Once it's approved, then I can contact Mayozi and we can move forward. Sooner than later, hopefully.
Any other questions? Do I make a motion?
Madam President. Make a motion that we approve the townwide road improvement bid to T. Mayozi LLC with a base bid of 877,933 dollars and 46 cents With an alternate of 215,724 dollars and 76 cents. For the recommendation of the Public Works Director and the administration. And authorize the administrator to sign once we have that approved contract.
Second.
That's a most second, okay. Tom Clark, roll call, please. Ms. Allen? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Okay, uh, executive session, closed session. Discussion by Council of Action and Round General Law 42 dash 46 dash 5. A two session pertaining to municipal court case number 06022021 in compliance with the Court Order to Clean the Property at 282 Quaker Highway, Donald and Dorothy Desper, property owners. Executive session, discussion by Council of Action around General Law 42 dash 46 dash 5, session pertaining to municipal court case 06022021 in compliance with Court Order to Clean Property at 282 Quaker Highway. Donald and Dorothy Desper, property owners. I will now entertain a motion to move into executive session at this time.
So.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Room on the fifteenth?
I'll get one.
Oh, okay. We don't know if there's another meeting on Wednesday. Usually there's a meet... Okay.
All right, and can I ask you again, on the other?